Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, and there is also an automatic defibrillator available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin with the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and go straight to our recognition and proclamations, and then we'll recess out of that and go back to our regular agenda, then starting with the Douglas County Board of Trustees. So with that, Douglas County Board of Commissioners, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. And just a note, Commissioner Boyle will be here, he'll just, is going to be a little late. First recognition and proclamation is recognition of county employees Joseph Kuntz retiring from the Douglas County Public Properties after 25 years of service, and Julie Thulon retiring from District Court after 23 years of service. And here to present is our Director of Human Resources. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning, Commissioners. It is with pleasure that we are able to recognize these two individuals. They are not present here today, but they do deserve recognition for their years of service. Joseph Kuntz, again, with 25 years of service with public properties, and Julie Thielen with 23 years with the District Court.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Please vote. I'm going to do the next one last, and so we'll move to the resolution commemorating the life and service of James Moylan. And I'll read the resolution. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of former University of Nebraska Board of Regents member and Deputy Douglas County Attorney James H. Jim Moylan on May 21st, 2015, at the age of 84. Whereas Jim Moylan is survived by his wife, Lila, sons James, Mike, and Patrick, daughters Jean, Mimi, and Molly, their spouses, and 15 grandchildren. And whereas Jim Moylan was born in Maynard, Iowa, in 1930, and went on to attend Creighton University. And whereas in the early 1950s, Jim Moylan served in the U.S. military during the Korean War. And whereas, starting in 1971, Jim Moylan became a member of the Nebraska Board of Regents, where he served in this position for nearly 20 years. And whereas later in his career, Jim Moylan worked as the lobbyist at the local and state level, including serving as one of Douglas County's lobbyists for several years, and was a fixture at the state Capitol when the legislature was in session. And whereas Jim Moylan devoted his life to public service and to Nebraska's political and legislative arenas, making a significant positive impact on our community. And whereas Jim Moylan had a reputation of being a kind, ethical, and dedicated individual, and he will be profoundly missed by all who knew him. Now therefore be it resolved by this Douglas County Board of Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby commemorates the life and service of James H. Moylan and does hereby formally extend its most sincere sympathy to his family and friends upon his passing, dated this second day of June, 2015.
Second.
Please vote. And next, we have a resolution expressing the county board's sympathy to the family of Omaha Police Department Officer Carrie Roscoe. And I know that there are a couple of officers here with us today. If you wanted to come up to the podium as we read the resolution, and then you can say a few words if you so choose. Whereas Omaha Police Officer Carrie Roscoe was born and raised in Walnut, Iowa. And whereas Officer Carrie joined the Omaha Police Force on December 17th, 2007, and served on the gang unit for the last three years. And whereas among her many volunteer efforts, Officer Carrie was a Special Olympics volunteer and served as president of the Police Officers Ball to raise money for the Special Olympics. And whereas Officer Carrie was known as Coach K to the youth at the Omaha Girls and Boys Club, where she served as a volunteer head baseball coach. And whereas Officer Carrie also took in rescue dogs and was a mentor for the girls' guides. And whereas on Wednesday, May 20th, 2015, Officer Carrie was killed in the line of duty while attempting to arrest a dangerous fugitive wanted on a felony warrant. And whereas Officer Carrie, who was only 29-years-old at the time of her death, is the first female law enforcement officer in the state of Nebraska to be killed in the line of duty. And whereas Officer Carrie is survived by her husband Hector, her two stepchildren, and her newborn daughter, Olivia Ruth. And whereas Officer Carrie will always be remembered as a loving wife, a mother, and one of the finest law enforcement officers, who was dedicated to serving her community with courage, empathy, patience, and compassion. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby expresses its deepest sympathy to the family of Officer Carrie Roscoe and to her fellow officers in the Omaha Police Department, and further wishes to express its most sincere appreciation to Officer Carrie for the courage, love, and commitment that she showed to the community that she so honorably served, dated the second day of June, 2015. Please vote. And you're welcome to say a few words if you'd like. We just felt it was important that we, as a county board, showed our appreciation of her, our sympathy to the family. And we know it's, we didn't meet last week, so we had to do it this week, but we wanted to make sure that the community knew that everyone was touched.
Good morning. I appreciate that. Commissioner Borgerson, on behalf of the Omaha Police Department, Chief Taj Schmader and Deputy Chief Mary Newman, myself, and Captain Rich Gonzalez, appreciate the opportunity to be here today and accept this resolution. I mean, we saw over the course of the last couple of weeks the tremendous person and professional that Carrie Roscoe was. I had the opportunity to supervise her personally over the last three years, and everything that you read, everything the community heard about in the news is just a small example of the type of person and professional that Carrie was over the last several years. And she embodied community service and being a public servant, and she has driven us all to try and reach that same legacy and try and strive to meet the same expectations that she did on a personal and professional level. And I will make sure that Ellen and Hector and the rest of her family receive this. And again, thank you very much.
We appreciate that. And if you want to come through and shake our hand, I'll give you the resolution. I think one of the things that Chief Schmader said that will resonate with all of us for a very long time is that let's hope that there's a little bit of Carrie in all of us as we continue on our work and our lives. So thank you for being here. We will now recess out of the County Board of Commissioners and enter into the Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees. Is there a motion? Roll call? Pardon me, vote, please. And I will turn it over to Commissioner Duda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the monthly meeting of the Douglas County Health Center Board of Trustees. We were regularly, had a regularly scheduled meeting two weeks ago. We did not have a quorum present at the monthly meeting at the health center. Thus, we're doing it again this morning briefly. So with that, Brandy, would you please call the roll?
Chair Duda.
Here.
Trustee Kavanaugh.
Chair.
Trustee Boyle. Trustee Kraft.
Chair.
Trustee Morgan. Trustee Rogers.
Thank you. First item for consideration is the approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on April 27th.
Second.
Questions or comments? Brandy, would you please call the vote?
Chair Duda.
Yes.
Trustee Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Trustee Morgan.
Yes.
Trustee Wright.
Here.
Yes.
Thank you. We now turn to our administrator for the Health Center routine reports, Jim Torreville. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, trustees. If you'll refer to the packet that I laid to your desk this morning, those are the pages that Brandy took out of your book at the health center. So you may see some notes that you jotted in there at the board meeting on the 18th. If you'll turn to the graphs, which should be right behind the minutes, the first document there, I'll just go through and tell you that the numbers we're reporting on are as April 30th of this year. At that time, we had 10 vacant beds ready for occupancy and short-term rehab, and there were eight vacant beds, excuse me, six vacant beds ready for occupancy and long-term care for a total of 16 vacant beds. You can see the vacancies by the neighborhoods there, and percentage of occupancy for short-term rehab at the end of April was 54.5%. Long-term care was 97.4% for an overall occupancy of 53.7%. Today, our occupancy in long-term care is 98.7%. Short-term rehab, 54.5%, and overall, 94.1% occupancy as of midnight last night. The graph down the bottom just merely shows what the overall average of, overall occupancy was based upon beds available as of April 30th. Next page, busy month. We got a total of 27 residents who left our care during the month of April. Three of those were due to death, and there were 24 that were due to being discharged to other places in the community. And we'll have more information on that, just the next page. For admissions, we had a total of 17. There were seven admissions to long-term care, and there were a total of 10 admissions to short-term rehab during the month of April. On the next page, we had 364.2 full-time equivalent employees on the payroll as of the end of April. We're budgeted for 390 FTEs. Yesterday, we had an orientation class that started. We had 18 employees in that orientation class for Douglas County Health Center Long-Term Care Support Services. We had had an admission coordinator. We had five LPNs that were in that class. We had eight nursing assistants. There was an MDS nurse. There was a unit secretary. There was a pharmacy clerk and a food service worker. So as I mentioned, there were 18 employees for our departments in the orientation class yesterday. It's probably one of the largest classes we've had that I can remember. On the bottom of the page shows the number of employees that were hired during the month of April. We hired an employee health nurse. We hired a senior pharmacy technician and a pharmacy assistant. We hired a nursing 4.4 FTEs, it was a .8 LPN, and 3.5 FTE nursing assistants. There was a total of 6.4 that we hired. During that same time, there was a total of 4.5 employees that left our employment. Executive secretary, dietary, food service worker trainee, and nursing services, we had one LPN who left our employment, and we had a total of four nursing assistants who left us during that time. And you can see adjacent to the numbers, they're just exactly what their reasons were for leaving our employment. At the present time, or at the end of April, we had 25.8 full-time equivalent positions that were vacant with the orientation class we have operating or in class right now. That number will reduce significantly. Any questions on anything that I've highlighted or reported on there so far?
Another question.
Certainly.
Chair, you want?
I was on the graph page in the packet.
Is that numbered? Can you number these in the future, Jim?
Certainly.
It'd really be helpful.
Certainly.
Because I, of course, I'm sorry I came in late. I had to work. But I was, it's hard to follow without the page number.
Most definitely. We'll do that for you, Commissioner. Thank you.
So where are we now?
We are now on the page that says referrals as of April 2015 resulting in admission.
Referrals?
Yes, sir. The title on the top is Douglas County Health Center Referrals for April.
Okay. What page do you think it is?
It's the one right after the blue and purple graph.
The purple graph, this one?
Yes. No.
Nope. Another purple? This one? Right here, Douglas County Health Center? Okay. Good. Sorry to bother you.
Oh, that's fine. We'll make sure we have them numbered for you next time. It's a great suggestion. As I mentioned previously, we had a total of 17 referrals that resulted in admission to our facility during the month of April. We had a total of seven that were from long-term care admissions. We had a total of 10 that were admitted to short-term rehabilitation. And you can see there that we've listed all of the facilities who referred to us, and you can see for short-term rehab that the largest refers during the month of April were Nebraska Medicine and Nebraska Methodist Health Center. The VA previously had four referrals they made to us, and this month they only had one to us. And we had one from Allegiant Creighton Bergen Mercy Medical Center. For April, we had a total of 19 residents who left our, actually 27 residents who left our care. There were five in long-term care. There were a total of, excuse me, there were eight in long-term care. There were a total of 19 in short-term rehab for a total of 27 altogether. And you can see there what the disposition was of the people who left our care. We had a few that just went to other facilities, some went home, and let you just kind of review those yourself. Any questions about anything that I've reported on?
The short-term rehab being a new, relatively new area for us to be involved with, I mean, I see we have seven that were discharged from there to long-term care.
Mm-hmm. Right.
The discussion was interesting out there how being so full in long-term care impacts how many people we can take into the short-term rehab.
And we're being real cognizant of that so that we don't get landlocked in short-term rehab with people who are waiting for long-term care, because then it precludes us from generating the revenue and serving the short-term rehab population we need to serve, so.
Well, it is exciting to see a new business venture out there, a new income stream, if you will, but it does take a little bit of adjusting and getting used to.
It does. And just for your information, we, exec staff is having a meeting this coming Thursday. It's our normal exec staff meeting, and we're going to be looking at what's been successful for short-term rehab, what we can do differently, what has not been successful, what we should do differently, and try to fine-tune it and make it more successful than it has been this year, so.
Very good.
We'll report on that next meeting.
All right. Thank you. Very good.
You bet. Diane Wallace was going to be here today, but she was unable to be here, so. Just a little bit about electronic health record. We had our kickoff last week with Meditech people from out east, and the 27th and 28th of May were the kickoff. And the next step is to begin meeting with Meditech implementation specialists and our directors or our employees at the health center to start working on developing the different modules. So it's in process, and we're excited about the opportunity. It's going to be, be a little work, but that's fine. That's what it's all about. Just to share with you also, the Wi-Fi, as I mentioned at the Board of Trustees, the Wi-Fi will be done by the 7th of June, so then the entire facility will have Wi-Fi so that when EHR is implemented, we'll have that connectivity throughout the entire facility. The only area that's not being connected is the basement of the Kavanaugh Care Center where the laundry used to be. There's no one, there's no departments down there of ours, so we didn't install it down there. It can be done later if we have to, but no need for it at this time.
Very good.
Then also, on the Board of Commissioners' agenda, we have a VA contract modification clause that we need to have your approval. If you recall, we did tell the VA we wanted to go ahead and receive full Medicare reimbursement, and they did agree to that as long as the price of the medications were included in that reimbursement. And Erin Nelson and Dee Dee Will did go ahead and take a look at that and make sure that everything was fine, and that the reimbursement would cover the cost, and it does. And so now they need to have the contract that we had entered into earlier this year modified to reflect that the drugs are included in the Medicare rate. One thing to share with you, that if the drug exceeds 8.5% of the billed charges, we can contact the VA, and they will consider doing something different for us in regards to that particular medication, because it's very expensive. They may provide the medication to us, or they may say to us, let's switch to another medication. So if it's less than the 8.5, we're okay. So 0 to 8.5% of the billed charges is the part that covers the drugs, and then the rest of it is for the other services. Is that clear?
American.
But what I want to share also, the VA does want to work with us and cooperate because it's to their advantage to have us right across the street from them, and it works very well for us and for them both. So they have a new CEO, and I have an appointment with him this week to go over and meet him and see how we can work together and collaborate more than we are right now.
Very nice. Trustee Borgerson.
How does that compare, Jim, to what our actual costs are?
I don't have that answer, but possibly Dee Dee will have that, our Director of Finance. She is going to be talking about the financial update for the month of April.
Okay. Because that's something I think we should be talking about, that if we're going to enter into these contracts, then our costs should be covered completely by what the contractual negotiated price is.
And just to share with you that the other contracts that they do have with other nursing homes, it's Medicare minus 15%. So, and that's what we had previously as well.
But we're doing them a favor.
Yes, we are.
By taking their residents into our facility.
And that's.
So I'm just saying, we should probably have that discussion instead of the local property taxpayers picking it up. It should be a federal government dollars picking it up.
Agreed.
Trustee Morgan.
Mr. Torreville.
Yes.
You mentioned you're going to be working with the CEO of Veterans Hospital. I think that there's a likelihood that they're probably going to be moving that facility down to the Creighton St. Joe Hospital in the very, very near future. We might start to explore and listen and see if it does make some sense for us to look at that facility because they'll declare it surplus property. They'll clear the site. Usually, the federal government does that on a site like that, especially a facility that's 60-years-old at least. And we might determine that, hey, there's some real advantages for us to at least look at that as a future site for who knows what we might use it for. Could be some recreation plus some other things for the county in the future, years down the road, but at least have the ability to work with our congressman and others to maybe have that site given to the county. And it's just a thought that other commissioners may have some thoughts on as we go down that road, but I think we should, if we are interested, we ought to start to at least talk to Congressman Ashford and some others about that. So your input at a future trustee meeting with your staff might be good for us to listen to. If that makes sense, Claire?
Sure does. You bet.
But I think that's likely to happen.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but it seems to me would it. Have you heard some thoughts on that?
No, I have not.
Really? Okay. Well, I think it's very likely.
Okay. Appreciate that.
If you went back far enough, that was county property before it became the VA. That was part of the field club golf course.
Okay.
Turn it into another golf hole. Trustee Boyle.
On that subject, whatever happens, whether they move or don't move to Creighton Medical Center, we need to make sure that that building is demolished at somebody else's expense. I remember, you know, way back when, when we ended up with about four packing houses in South Omaha, and there's still the Salvation Army building standing near Martha Street that's been vacant for, I don't know, 40 years. But we need to make sure that the federal government tears that building down at their expense. I don't want anybody, any property taxpayers in Douglas County or Omaha to be paying for that. That's going to be a huge cost.
Totally agree with you, but I do think the federal government would do that, and usually does in those cases.
I hope so. Let's just get it in writing, you know?
And of course, we have to do, or there would have to be an asbestos assessment done as well.
Oh, it'd be awesome. So it'd probably be a $100 million demolition.
Wow. Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Did you have anything else, Jim?
I did not.
All right. Then Dee Dee, you want to give us a little fiscal update, please? And how is that VA rate? How will we do on that?
That VA rate, we used to, as Jim said, got, we were receiving 15% less Medicare, so now we're at the full Medicare rate, plus we have the opportunity to get additional pharmacy reimbursement if that comes to fruition. It is higher, our average Medicare rate right now is around 480. So it is, it's covering our costs now. Of course, on some of them, you're going to win, some of them you're going to lose, but on the average, you want to come out, you know, ahead on those. So we'll continue to monitor that and look at those VA patients, try and get them individually, and look at those and make sure where we're at, if we've got special equipment or whatever for those. So we'll continue to look at those.
Thank you, Dee.
Mm-hmm. In your packet. We are closed through the month of March when we presented last week. We are now closed through the month of April. I just don't have those updated numbers yet. I just got the copies. So this information is as of the end of March. If you look about 2/3 of the way down the page, we are at a net budget positive position of approximately $1 million. And the major components of that, in administration, we are budget positive about $640,000. And that is due to, usually in a year, we receive disproportionate share payments for our Medicaid population from CMHC, one payment a year. This year, we have two of them due to the timing of those. Commissioner Rogers, you had asked the question about DISH and when that would be phased out. I believe from everything that I saw, that they're looking at that would be 2018 through 2025. So we do have a couple of years of that left. Pharmacy, we are budget positive, a little over $500,000. This is, again, due to Erin watching some of the drug costs, looking at formularies. Community Mental Health Center is budget positive, approximately $517,000. This is due to timing of revenue, and then they were down a psychiatrist for most of the year. Long-term care and short-term rehab, as Jim went through the occupancy numbers, I think that he, we're, you know, up in the high 90s for long-term care, we're about 50% for short-term rehab. So with the occupancy numbers, with some staff absences, we had some billing delays, so we are now, having that money is now coming in. And we had some decreased salaries. That is a net negative budget position of about $700,000. But if we net all those together, we're still above $1 million for a budget positive.
Trustee Boyle.
I'm not following the map this morning.
Okay.
I was okay with the first two. I mean, at least your numbers jive, but when you got down to the CMHC, you said that it was $517,000 to the good.
Mm-hmm.
Well, down on your chart, it says it's $225,915.
That's on just the expense side, Commissioner Boyle. If you look at the top, is, the first set of numbers, that first block of numbers is the revenue.
First block of numbers of the revenue. So that's $290,000 revenue.
Yes. So they are above in revenue of $290,000.
Uh-huh.
And then the second block of numbers, they're under in expenses. So for a net budget position, they are positive $517,000.
So you add those, you add those two figures together? Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay. And then, let's see. On administration, talk about that, and talk a little slower, if you will. I'm kind of not getting it this morning. I had a difficult hearing this morning.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that.
That's all right.
But you made it.
But, yeah, I did.
We receive payments, Community Mental Health Center receives, they're called disproportionate share payments.
I'm looking at the administration.
That's where that is booked in our system.
$500,000?
Uh-huh.
Okay. That's Community Mental Health?
Well, that's overall, but that, this piece of it relates to Community Mental Health. The reason why that that is a budget positive position is due to the disproportionate share payments we receive, the additional disproportionate share payment we receive the share for Community Mental Health.
Okay. I don't understand how, administration is what? What is administration? You've got administration up here. What is that? I mean, are you mixing, you're mixing pharmacy and CH, CMHC into that, or what are you doing?
No. Administration is separate. I mean, it's.
It's what?
Administration is separate. The revenue from administration is general revenue. For example, For example, we would put the intergovernmental transfer payment that we received for the whole facility, we would put it into administration.
The money, the property tax dollars from here?
No, property tax dollars are down on their own. They're that last line under revenue.
Okay, I'm sorry, let's go back. What is the source of revenue for administration?
The largest portion is the disproportionate share payment for CMHC and the intergovernmental transfer portion for the health center.
Okay, well, that isn't clear to me, but we'll have to get it together.
I can break that up for you. I can go ahead and, I can send you a separate email and break that up for you, if you'd like.
That'd be great, if you would.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, because I'll be asking the question, where does it, where do the, how much are the taxpayers in Douglas County paying into this fund, into your operations?
For nine months, we were budgeted for $12.7 million. Or $12.7 million is what was transferred to us. We were budgeted for $10.5 at nine months.
Okay, so you're still receiving $12.7 million annually from Douglas County?
Yes.
Okay. Is that an improvement over five years ago?
I don't have that number with me. I can look though.
Well, I guess it seems to me that, I remember the figure bannered around that we were pumping a million dollars a month into the facility. And if that's the case, I mean, I remember that, I don't know of any lower number I've ever heard. So it just seems like we've been pumping a million dollars plus into the facility for at least a decade. And I don't, I mean, everything else may be popping up and there may be some changes slowly grinding, but we're still coming up with quite a bit of money every month.
Well, we're working towards the goal of decreasing that. Of course, we have to, as you just said, you know, things are slowly coming together. So we have to put some money in to go ahead and as we go forward to get some of that money back. So we've met.
Well, I was going to say, the problem, the problem is that in a matter of priorities, I'm really concerned because we have, according to our Correction Director, Dr. Foxall, we have 45 percent of the inmates at Douglas County Corrections are mentally ill. And we need something dramatic to help them. And we could sure use a lot of this, $12 million, to do something about that.
That does support CMHC functions, too.
I'm sorry?
That does. The tax dollars that we receive support both the health center, which includes, or when I say both, the health center includes CMHC. So it is supporting CMHC also.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that we need to do something about Corrections, too, because we have a real serious problem over there that's getting worse. And I'm just asking questions, if we're still spending a million a month, I'd like to cut it to maybe half a million.
Okay.
And we could use the other half million to treat the mentally ill.
Well, half of that money is going to the mentally ill.
Well, I'm talking about Corrections.
I know you are, but you're going to take money from the Community Mental Health Center for mentally ill?
No, I'm not. I'm going to tell you, part of the $12 million that we're supplying, $12.13 million that we're giving to the facility, is that I'd like to see a good chunk of that, half a million maybe, to go to the Department of Corrections to handle the inmates and try to get some help for those who are mentally ill and are incarcerated. And, you know, and the community mental health, I support, you know, fully what they're doing, too. But I guess the emphasis to me should be on the care for the mentally ill. That's where I am. Because it's so critical.
Understand that half of that $12 million is going to the mentally ill.
Well, I'll have to sit down with Dee and have that shown to me because I don't already see it.
Okay.
Let's see, where were we? I think that was it.
Sorry, DeeDee.
Where was I?
Sorry about that.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine. I think it might be helpful also, we need to sit down and redo a total allocation of costs for the health center to the various programs. So that would show then what, even the overhead that is sitting in long-term care, that gets a portion to the mental health center. So you'd be able to see more so, where those dollars are going, how much is actually going to CMHC, how much is going to long-term care, how much primary health, we do some services for primary health. So I think that's, we need to really do that, to be able to show you guys that.
Thank you. Trustee Borges.
I think this probably would go to Jim as well, is do we have yet the updated spreadsheet on the HMA recommendations? And the reason I think that's critical is for two reasons. One is obviously so we stay up on where we are with them. And two, that is going to be a good place where I think it would help Commissioner Boyle and all of us to follow the dollars. And I think what we'll see is that some of the increase in revenue that we had originally anticipated would be used to reduce our tax support dollars was used to implement some of those HMA recommendations. So we put it back into the system before we took it for those cost savings.
That's correct.
So I think if we watch it and we're at a point where we can say, okay, now we've implemented all those cost, those cost recommendations, and here now are the benefits that we're going to be seeing, we knew that it was going to take a while in order to reach that point.
Right.
And obviously, to get the short-term rehab up and running to full capacity in order to see that million dollar, potentially million dollar increase in revenue. So I think if we're, if we get that spreadsheet updated and then the fiscal part of it flowing underneath of it, so we can see where those dollars were being spent on those recommendations, I think it'll be a totally different picture, what we're seeing.
Doing. I have started updating that spreadsheet. If you remember, it's rather cumbersome. So I'm working my way, yeah, trying to maneuver stuff around. But I have started that. And I don't know when our next HMA update is, but is it next week or the week after? But hopefully, I can have that done and maybe we can go through that then.
Yeah, I think that will be helpful to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, it is important to look at the big picture and, I mean, it's with the monies that the health center has saved, somewhat in part because of the HMA recommendations and somewhat they're just trying to run a tighter ship. But that's how we were able to be implementing the electronic health records, which of course was one of the big HMA recommendations, but a very expensive step to undertake. And we're getting it done. We are running things more efficiently out there, I do believe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, short-term rehab update. Shandra? Yeah, Shandra Wilkins, our Marketing and Admissions Consultant.
Good morning.
Short-term rehab. Hi, Shandra.
We hired an admission coordinator. He started three weeks ago. His name is Lee. He's been working out well. He was connected in the county. He came from another facility here in town. So this next month or so will be the focus to bring in more referrals from Creighton. I have several meetings with some orthopedic doctors out in West Omaha, the Spine Center. Lunch is coming up, so I'll be able to do some more marketing and less hands-on with the incoming referrals.
Very good.
Anything for me?
Trustee Boyle.
What effect do you see Madonna coming into our community?
In Bellevue?
Madonna coming into the area, yeah, for serving the entire area?
They're more of an acute facility. It's all going to depend. The federal government is thinking about eliminating, they call that an LTAC, a long-term care hospital, and Medicare is thinking about eliminating those. So at this point in this industry, we're kind of holding our breath to see what happens. That decision should be in about two to three years. So I think they took beds.
I'm sorry?
I think they took beds. There's licensures involved with that, with-
You say they took beds?
Mm-hmm. There's a shortage of long-term care beds in our community. And it's a long, complicated process, but hospitals gave up their beds licensure so Madonna could have those beds. And they're building a huge facility, I believe, also separate from the medical center in a couple of years.
West.
Yeah, so there's some pros and cons. I personally would have liked to have seen another select and more long-term care beds in our community, so, but I don't think that's going to happen.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you, Shandra.
Thanks.
Good report. I don't see Sherry. I wonder, Mike, you're handling the Community Mental Health Center reports today.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm standing in for Sherry Glassnap today. My name is Mike Phillips and I'm the Director of Outpatient Services at the Community Mental Health Center. And so in your packet is our staffing report. We're currently authorized for 88 staff and currently we have 85 employed. You can look at the report and in interest of brevity, I'll move right along unless somebody has some questions, so holler at me if you have a question, please.
Real quick, Mike, on the psychiatrists. What's our status there?
We do have a doctor lined up and she's slated to start in early July, I believe.
And this will be our fourth psychiatrist?
Yes.
So this will bring us back up to four?
Yes, it'll bring us back up to what we're slated for. We've been running most of the year on three and it has impacted our ability to draw down revenue and see patients. There's a significant portion, if you think about 25 percent of your psychiatry department being absent or gone, it does have an impact on what we can do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And so we're anxiously looking forward to that.
I'll bet.
Get back up to full strength.
And when will that be again, that you'll be fully staffed?
Beginning of July. She's starting in that first week in July, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
And so next on the list is our workload report.
Excuse me a second, Mike. I think Trustee Kraft has a question.
You brought in the fact that, you know, having one less psychiatrist also affects the revenue you can bring in. A while ago, when I first came on board, we had five psychiatrists. And the county board, in all its wisdom, said, you can operate with four. Is four the right number or would five be more optimum?
And I think that would be a real discussion as far as what the vision is of the Community Mental Health Center, I mean, going forward, as to, I mean, what our current capacities look like as far as how we're structured at the moment. I mean, the four seems to work, but who's going to say that, you know, to add an additional psychiatrist, maybe if we would do more with Corrections or have some more interface that way? I mean, I think really some of it comes on that strategic planning for the Community Mental Health Center and also some of the direction from the Board of Trustees, as far as where do you see us going? So if you're asking me right now to say, sure, I'll take another psychiatrist, if you're offering up the funding for it, I'd probably say, sure. But I think it really is a conversation between the Community Mental Health Center and the Board of Trustees as far as were that, what the plan or what you see us doing two, three years from now. I don't know if that answered your question.
You did and you answered it very well. And I'd like to have that discussion at one of our Board of Trustees meetings.
Very good. We'll make that happen.
Yeah, and so with, I mean, with the fourth, it does impact quite a few things, more than just the one psychiatrist being there, but then it's the other three remaining doctors have to pick and choose where they spend some of their time. So it impacts a variety of the services that we offer being down this past year.
Well, and the fact that you have to have a psychiatrist available anytime 24/7, when you're down to three, I would think that would burn them out pretty quickly.
It does stress the system and stress the doctors.
I'll bet.
And we don't like stressed doctors.
Especially when it comes to psychiatric.
Okay, next on the list is the workload report. Would you like me to go through it all or just if there's any questions? I know we're running kind of long.
Yeah, I don't think we need to go through the figures on that particularly.
Okay. And the next document on the list is our outpatient psychiatric medication distribution. And it sort of lines out where the expenses and where the funding came from for the medicine that we are utilizing for our CMHC clients. Any questions on that?
All right. Thank you. I think you're going to get off pretty easy this morning, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, I'm running right along. Well, in regards to talking about Corrections and hearing Commissioner Boyle speak to that, there is a program I'd like to update you on, is that we did receive a Bureau of Justice grant and Douglas County did, and we're working with the reentry people at Corrections to start an intensive outpatient, co-occurring intensive outpatient program over on the reentry side. We've hired two of the four staff and we hope to start accepting people into that program like that third week in July, or June, this month. Yeah, it's already moved on. But so that's moving right along. And in talking about our interface with Corrections, I kind of counted on my fingers. But right now, the Community Mental Health Center has, when this program is up and fully running, will have 14 staff members that are actively involved in touching some sensor programming down at Corrections. So we are trying to help fill that gap and help the Corrections Department as well as serving the residents of Douglas County.
Claire?
Trustee Boyle.
Yeah, and Mike, I knew that and that's one of the really, really highlights of the relationship between county government, your facility operating with and cooperating with the correctional facility. It's pretty much unheard of for departments like that, not necessarily in Douglas County, but across the country. But this is really a great thing that's happening. And I can't support it enough. I mean, I think it's so critical that we try to break that cycle of mental illness, people cycling through our correctional facility, homeless people, addicted, all sorts of things. And you're really the key to it. So that's why I want to see you get as much funding as we can possibly squeeze into the operation, so.
So we have awareness of the need and we're trying to meet those needs as best as we can in this current environment. I mean, it's an always changing environment that we're functioning in behavioral health, shifts and moves sometimes almost monthly.
Absolutely.
But we have an awareness of the need and we're trying as best as we can to meet that need.
Well, you're doing a great job on that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And just to note, one of our funding streams, Region Six, did come and do their annual audit and we did quite well. The final report hasn't been mailed to us yet, but on the exit interview, we met and did pretty much everything that they wanted us to do. Anything else for me?
I think you're off the hook, Mike. Nice job. Thanks.
Thank you.
We have had a request for an executive session. Would you call this personnel, I guess?
Yes.
All right, for, to discuss personnel at the health center.
Motion to go into executive session for personnel purposes.
Second.
Okay. Brandy, would you please call the vote?
Chaduta?
Yes.
Trustee Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Trustee Borges?
Yes.
Trustee Boyle?
Yes.
Trustee Kraft?
Yes.
Trustee Morgan?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?[1647.23]
Motion.
Chaduta?
Yes.
Trusty Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Trusty Morgan?
Yes.
Trusty Rogers?
Motion.
Chaduta?
Yes.
Trusty Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Trusty Morgan?
Yes.
Trusty Rogers?
Motion.
Chaduta?
Yes.
Trusty Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Trusty Morgan?
Yes.
Trusty Rogers?
Yes.
Trusty Morgan?
Yes.
Trusty Rogers?
Motion.
Chaduta?
Yes.
Trusty Kavanaugh?
Yes.
G thirteen, B four, just to vote on separate.
G thirteen?
Thirteen.
Okay. Just to be voted on separate?
Yep.
Okay. Thirteen, G thirteen. So with that, the consent agenda is minus two, five, and thirteen at this point. Please vote. G two and five will be brought back at a later date. G thirteen is a resolution to approve the agreement with Creighton University regarding the training and assurance policy development, policy system or environment improvement to increase physical activity for race and ethnic approaches to community health, also known as the REACH program. Any questions or comments? Please vote. We already did the recognitions and proclamations. We'll move to citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move...I'm sorry?
On the recognition, proclamations, I'd like to ask the county clerk to add my name as in support of all three of those. Have you already voted on them? Is that what you said?
Oh, I see. Yes, we did. We did them before.
Yes, I'd like to have you...ask you to add my name as approval of all three. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Next are the committees, first being the Finance. Commissioners Morgan and Kavanaugh, do you have anything besides the two items on the agenda?
I think so. We will start a finance meeting right after the board meeting, within, what, fifteen minutes, twenty minutes? Looks like we're going to finish. Do we have an executive session today, or do you know?
Yeah.
So...
We might.
We'll see how that goes. Okay. Nine oh three.
So the budget report is as presented, and then the item two is an increased appropriation to the following general fund department, the Juvenile Court, increased attorney's fees primarily for guardian alitem services. This was held over from last week. Joe, do you have anything further you want to...
Yeah, this is something I've been working on with Ray Curtis, which would be a supplement to get them through the fiscal year, which ends on June 30th. And that number came from Ray, and I think it was just Patrick telling me that Ray is trying...is making his way over here. So if there's some specific questions, we hope that he would be here shortly.
Okay. Is there anyone wanting to make comment on this agenda item? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Beverly Sills. I spoke to you earlier this morning. In regards to the guardian alitem fee...
Could you speak into the microphone just a little bit? And could you spell your last name for us?
Sills, S S N Sam, I L L S S N Sam. My children were in the program. They were bought through care for three years because of a dirty home. The billing, I worked for an attorney, or I did work for an attorney recently who passed away, and I understand the billing system for the guardian alitem. Frequently, a lot of attorneys will bill once the case is finished, rather than every month. They're supposed to bill, I believe, every ninety days, but a lot of them just bill when the case is over. That way, they're not repeating, making more petitions for fees. So I know with...just recently, with the attorney passed away, I went through all his files. I was billing for the juvenile court. There were...he hadn't billed for some cases from 2005, and I ended up submitting a bill for almost $20,000 for...from 2005 up to current, just for guardian alitem and juvenile court cases. And it just...I understand that there's a new...they're implementing a new computer-based program where you will bill every thirty days, and I hope that does bring the cost down, but I don't know how that's going to, you know, address the current situation with them needing more money. Do you have any questions?
Mike, Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I think I...I'm kind of in the wrong...I need to change my seat. I have a hard time hearing. That's what I tell my wife, anyway, you know. But anyway, on a serious matter, I'm very, very curious about what you just said. First of all, the why you ended up...your children ended up in guardian alitem, I think is pretty...if it's a...
I had a dirty home.
Well, I just think that's...
It's frequent. It happens a lot. I see even a lot of cases where I'm billing out, where it's a dirty home, or if there's code violations, like building code violations. It happens a lot where children are removed for code violations or for a dirty home. And it doesn't need to happen. It really doesn't.
Well, I'm curious, too. I would assume a lot of those homes are probably rentals, aren't they?
A lot of them are rentals, yes.
So they're not responsible for the code violations, for starters?
And there are some, I'm sure that they...there are, that they are responsible, but is that a reason to take away children?
Right. Could I ask you, are you able to come upstairs? When will this be...could we move this item to be discussed first before the budget report, do you think? Would you gentlemen be willing to do that?
Sure. Whatever you want.
I'd like...it'd be helpful to me, if the other commissioners were to indulge me, to ask you to come up to this meeting we just talked about. It'll be about twenty minutes after this meeting adjourns upstairs in nine oh three. Are you able to attend?
Yes. I do have my daughter with me.
Okay.
She was involved in the...
Okay.
Would it be appropriate that she would come as well?
I don't...oh, absolutely. Yeah. And I think it'd be helpful, because it sheds some real-life experience on what we're considering, which is very useful. So if you do that, I would really be indebted.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I did reach out for help while I was in the system. I just got my children back last summer.
Wow.
And it was just so horrible.
I've worked with families in private practice, and so I really have a lot of empathy what you're talking about.
I mean, even with my children in the system for as long as they were, they could not identify or even name their guardian alitem.
Okay, well, that'd be helpful in this meeting, really would be. Thank you for agreeing to come up.
And about what time is that?
It's ninth floor, nine oh three. And if I...I'll ask the chairs of that committee to move that subject up first, and then get your testimony in and out, and we'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Beverly, I have a question on the billing aspects. Are the cases that you are billing for, are those closed now?
No.
And that's why you're bid...
No, no. The attorney passed away, and I called the court, and I asked them to reassign all of the juvenile cases that my attorney had worked on, and they're billed at this...some of them were closed, yes. Some of them...there were a few that were closed, and there were some that's been closed since 2005.
But have never been billed?
But it had never been billed. I don't think he really had the intention to bill the ones that old.
And then I think that's probably just the next question to our finance director or the clerk's office in terms of...I thought we had a ninety-day rule for submission of services to be paid for that were provided.
When we get a court order, we pay the court order.
So it doesn't matter when that is?
We don't have any authority to deny a court order, so...
So if something was...
If the judges say pay it, we pay it.
Even back for 2005?
And I did ask him about the one from 2005, and I said, I totally understand if they weren't going to pay it, because it was so old. And I didn't believe he ever intended on billing for that.
That's just interesting to me. I didn't know that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in a little while.
Commissioner Morgan?
The one thing I wanted Beverly to know is it is an open meeting.
Nine oh three.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Rogers?
Ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you say you worked for attorney and you had your kids taken?
Correct. I didn't...I didn't work for the attorney until after my kids were returned to me.
Was...did the attorney was not assigned to your kids?
No, not at all.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I am Angela Schumaker. I have to get on my tippy toes. I am a graduate researcher. Oh, the last name is S C H U M A K E R. I'm a graduate researcher, and I've been looking at guardian alitem cases. Of the cases I've interviewed, I've had eighty-one percent where the GAL did not meet with the client, and two were unsure if it was met within state statute every six months. And then I met with an attorney, a former GAL, and she had some special problems regarding her experience, such as lack of compensation, lack of accountability, high volumes of cases, as much as 500 cases per law firm, but then there would be multiple children per case. There needed to be more quality training. A limit must be set. She talked about minimal training for highly contentious cases. Judges have said they're spending too much time on a case and would call and not reimburse for various reasons, although it didn't happen often. And then other experiences by some of my research participants included lack of training in domestic violence and sexual assault, anonymous calls led to the removal of children, but then after five to twelve months, the children were returned. One case had as many as forty-two service providers involved. Further abuses were suffered in temporary placement. One case had a fraudulent psychologist serving a four-year prison sentence currently for fabricating credentials without attending any college, no masters, no doctorate. And then that was compounded with Monahan, who had lost her contract. So I just wanted to give a voice to some of the research that I've found with the attorney who came and spoke with me and with several different families who have suffered.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I'd like to see if you could, if you have a written report of what you found, and I'm sure the other commissioners would like it as well.
Okay.
So if you send it to me, I'll pass it on.
Do you have an email that you want to share with me?
Yes, I do. It's mike dot Boyle. Is that right? Mike dot Boyle at...this is a long one. Douglas County, one word, dash N E dot gov. So it's mike dot Boyle, all small letters, B O Y L E, at douglascounty-dash-N E dot gov.
Okay, thank you. I'll send it through.
And I'll send it to everybody else.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ma'am, can I...
Yes, Commissioner Rogers.
Ma'am, what did you...what did you say you do again?
I'm a graduate researcher at the university. I'm pre-law.
Which university?
UNL.
Okay.
I'm a criminology master student.
Okay. All right, got it. Thanks.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that report, and we look forward to seeing the written. Ray has just come in to the chamber. Ray, we're on your item about the increased appropriation to...for the juvenile court, if you wanted to say a few words about it.
Sure. Ray Curtis from Juvenile Courts.
Congratulations on the baby, by the way.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. Everyone's happy and healthy.
It's good.
Right now, we have been overspent in attorney's fees by $984.95. We have approximately three weeks left in the fiscal year till the budget cutoff, and we're processing approximately $56,000 each week in attorney's fees. So that's a total of $168,000 left to spend in attorney's fees. Our unobligated budget right now is at $235,891.68. We have two payrolls to still hit this fiscal year at approximately $36,000 apiece for $72,000. So right now, we have a projected shortfall of $5,093.27, with I have $750 in postage that's just got on my desk this morning, as well as about $2,500 in other bills. So we're approximately $10,000 overspent, or will be by the end of the fiscal year. I spoke with the fiscal administrator, and I believe the discussion was at approximately $25,000 request. We'd return all unspent money, of course. I'm thinking that we would not need $25,000 at the most, I think, approximately $15,000, $17,000 to cover all remaining obligations.
So what happened to all of the attorney fee increases that we talked about last week? Those are being just...are those just being forwarded to next year's budget?
No, no. At the budget meeting a few weeks ago...
There was like $253,000 you said you were going to be over budget?
That was an approximate over budget for the attorney's fees line item, and now that's down to about $168,000.
And so walk through me one more time, because if it's $168,000 that you're going to be over, and you're only asking for 25...
In that one line item, for the attorney's fees line item. We have an unobligated budget right now of $235,000. A lot of that savings is in the out-of-home placements. We have a budget of $70,000 there and an unobligated budget of $69,298.40. So that's where a lot of that savings comes into play.
So you're using those dollars to pay for the increase in attorney costs?
Yes.
And are these attorney costs coming because they're not utilizing the current contracts that expire at the end of this month?
There has been an increase since the decision to end the contracts. Traditionally, it's been approximately 20% appointed outside of the contracts for the GALs. Since then, I've noticed an increase, one month of 26%, another month of 30%, and it's just steadily ratcheting up.
And are the current contractors being appointed outside of their contracts currently?
No, they're not. They're still receiving appointments. They are still receiving appointments.
But are they being appointed outside the contract?
No. No.
Okay.
No, but however, at the...on July 1st, there are...
Their contract...
Those contracts basically just go from the contract rate to...and they convert to an hourly rate.
Right. Right. Commissioner Duda?
Question on that, if I may. So if a case right now is being assigned to one of the contractors, contract ends end of this month, that attorney will still have that case, but now will be getting paid at a higher rate for it.
At $65 per hour, which is the current rate.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good. Thanks.
Any other questions for...Commissioner Boyle?
Mr. Curtis, I'm...this is not in relation to guardian alitem fees, but can you tell us, not necessarily at the podium, from the podium, but can you tell us how many children we have and you have in out-of-home placements, and where they're placed, and what that's costing annually? Not...I don't expect you to give me that answer, but...
Yes, yes, we can do that. As far as the cost to the county, we have spent $462.60 this year in out-of-home placements.
I'm sorry, how much?
$462.60. And that was for a plane ticket for a runaway.
Oh, no, I'm talking about when you send someone a child to Clorinda, who pays for that?
That would be either probation or HHS.
Okay. I'd like to see...I'd like to see that cost, if I could, and also how many children you have in those facilities, and in what facilities.
Sure, sure. And that's something we can get from probation.
Okay, great. Thank you for your help.
Any other questions for Ray? Is there a motion on the floor, or I guess this is...yeah. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the general fund increases to the juvenile court budget?
So move.
And the resolution also states the environmental services will be needing an increase of $25,000. And I would like to take these separately, please. So the first one is the increase in the attorney fees for guardian alitem services for juvenile court of $25,000.
So move.
Is there a second? Please vote. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Next is the environmental services, $25,000 supplemental budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Please vote.
Come on, you guys. Let's vote. Come on. I think your brother fixed this, Jim.
Motion passes.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that and make sure everyone's aware that what we're doing is taking $25,000 from the environmental services budget, where there's plenty of room, and we're moving that money over within the general fund to the juvenile court. So the general fund budget in total is not being increased. So we're just doing a transfer between departments so that the...
Oh, I read that wrong.
So that...yeah. So I just...I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I read it wrong. So there's not an increase. There's not a request from environmental services. I'm sorry. I read it wrong. Okay. So we're...there's additional dollars in the environmental services fund. We're moving that to the juvenile fund. So we didn't need to vote on the environmental services one. Scratch that one.
Scratch that one.
Scratch that one.
Scratch my...
My mistake.
Scratch my motion.
I have no problem admitting when I have a mistake. Okay. And I made one. So there.
I'm happy to admit it, too.
There, right. Yeah. Next is the criminal justice committee. There is an item that was laid over. Defense Commissioner Boyle is here this week, report on inmate mental health.
Well, you know, I have to attribute this to my age. I spoke to...I don't know what this is. I don't know why this is on the agenda. I must...obviously, I requested it. But I spoke to Dr. Foxall, and of course, he would be very much involved in this, and we'll have to backtrack and see where this all came from. Do you remember?
I do remember. I think it is basically...and the meeting didn't take place.
Right.
We've been working with corrections and the Community Mental Health Center to map out when someone enters our facility, what happens and what services they get, and how they get them for mental health. And we're not done with the map yet.
Okay, that's it.
So we were hoping to have been done so that we could talk about it, but I think we've rescheduled that now till the 15th, maybe. So we'll put this back on when we're done with it. But it's very interesting. It's...
It is.
Kai has done a wonderful job of following our flow charts of how we're doing this, and I think you guys will be very interested to see the different aspects of how someone flows through our department and what they do get for services once they're inside our jail.
It is very interesting, but not quite ready.
Right. And then we're also identifying the gaps of what is needed when someone is either in our Community Mental Health Center or the jail needing those services. So we'll bring that back when we're done with it.
Thanks.
Or put it back on when we're completed with it.
Okay.
And then while we're on that subject, after the executive session and before we go up to the finance, I would like all of us to take a picture in front of our deal here. I have a...I've made a big resolution, copy of the big resolution of the stepping up initiative through the national, and there...we can tweet it, put it on our social media, talk about it. And then Commissioner Boyle and I have talked about preparing a press conference when we get some of this work done, and we'll talk about it at there, too. But I would like a picture with our resolution right after this board meeting. With that, the human resources. The first item is the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented, if there are no questions. The next item is the CAO report on staff assault.
One at corrections, only minor injuries, so nothing serious.
And then legislative issues. We will be getting a presentation from our lobbyist at next week's meeting about the end of the session, a summary briefing, legislative summary briefing. The final chart will be prepared for you, and also the fiscal impact chart of the legislative items that will be affecting us. But in short, last week, LB 577 did pass, which permits counties to regulate the peddlers, hawkers, and solicitors. LB 605, Senator Mello's prison reform bill, did pass. And Senator Norquist, LB 623, which provides for issuance of motor vehicle licenses and state IDs, passed, and it was vetoed, but it was overridden by the legislature. So those were at least two very high-level legislative bills that were talked about and have an impact on us, and we'll hear about that next week. Any other questions on legislative?
Well, I just want to take a moment, and I know that all the commissioners will agree with me, but I want to take a moment to thank Marcos for the outstanding job he did in putting these things together in a...frankly, in a way that we could understand quickly. Nice summaries, and I really appreciate the effort he put into it. It was extremely useful and triggered a lot of responses to state senators and so forth. So it was very readable, and I just want to thank him for his really excellent work wading through these bills and making some sense of them as they changed so rapidly. So thanks a lot, Marcos. I really appreciate it.
Very well done. Thank you, Marcos. Very, very good job. We do have need for an executive session for labor negotiations, just labor negotiations. And then before we go into executive session, I was asked just to also make a comment about if people could go home and change clothes and put orange on, because orange, it's supposed to be...orange is going to bring attention today to the impact on gun violence in our communities and in honor and memory of those killed each year through domestic violence and street violence with guns. So if you see someone wearing orange, that's what they are representing today, and I was asked to make that announcement. And after the finance committee meeting, there will be an administrative services committee meeting also in nine oh three, and that will just immediately follow the finance. Okay? So motion to go into executive session for labor negotiation. Please vote.
Mine too, fatality accident. Two hundred and fourth of the Pacific.
So the reason I brought you all here today... ...may be such a politician. I'm thinking about running for sheriff of Cass County.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Hold that sucker. Hold it.
Shall I record you as a yes? Shall I record you as a yes? Okay. Motion passes.